Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building four, five, six, seven, Route nine, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV seventy-seven. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision and that decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you, Eileen. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor. Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Moretti is excused. Mr. Roscoe is absent. Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Rubel.
Here.
Mr. Parisi.
Here.
And Chairman Say is excused. You have a form.
Okay, thank you. Can we all rise and say the pledge allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bayer. Could you swear in our professionals?
Yes. Where's Jen there? Oh, there she is. Your window moved on my computer, Jen. I don't know. And there's Sherry and then Charlie. Yes, do you swear that testimony you give and Sherry? Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
I do.
Professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good. Um, Eileen, do we have any minutes to approve?
No minutes to approve tonight.
Uh, vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Okay, I guess we may have some correspondence. Is that the case?
Yes, I have two things for correspondence tonight. I have a letter from John Junko, attorney for Countryside North American Partners LLC, case number BA twenty-one, twenty-one, asking that his application, which is on tonight's agenda, be rescheduled to the first meeting in January twenty-twenty-three with no further notice. And he gave an extension to the board through January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. And what was the second one?
Wait, Eileen, do we have an actual date?
Uh, we don't. Eileen sent out the meeting dates tonight, so I'm not sure if you wanted to discuss that tonight, and then I can give an official date.
Did he say the first, uh, meeting of January?
Yes, which Eileen has as January ninth.
Can we do a tentative January ninth? And then make changes if needed?
Yeah, I think for the benefit of the public, we need a date certain, and then if it's going to be changed, we'll have to let the public be aware of that somehow, whether the applicant's got to re-advertise or or we put some other, some kind of notice. But yeah, as long as we have a date certain, we're good.
I can say January ninth for me. I'm just fine. I don't know if that helps.
Anybody else within some input on that?
It's fine.
Okay, well, then it's time. Go ahead.
Just it should be fine for me as well.
Okay, well, for the purpose of letting the public know, we'll go ahead and have it tentatively January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. So I'll let people know that you're attending the meeting tonight, that, uh, this case, BA twenty-one dash twenty-one Countryside North American Partners LP will be rescheduled to January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three with no further notice. And, um, I guess that's it. So, Eileen, what was the other correspondent?
Uh, it was just that Eileen sent out the meeting dates and to tell everyone to review them.
Okay.
A question, question for you on that. It looks like those are going to be live meetings starting in January. Is that correct?
I don't think that's correct. I think they're still be on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll look into that, see what's going on for next year. Um, okay, well, now we'll go to the resolutions before we start the first case. Resolution case number BA twenty-two dash oh-four, Sina Holdings LLC, a resolution granting use variance, bulk variance, and preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters is Cantor, Hughes, Moretti, Roscoe, Rubel, and Sayah. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second, uh, any second?
Second that.
All right, Mr. Cantor. Okay, we'd have a roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
And Mr. Rubel.
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Okay, case number BA thirteen, gas fifteen A slash GF United Realty LLC, resolution granting a one-year extension of time. Eligible voters Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Stanton, Parisi, and Sayah. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Cantor.
I'll second.
Who was that? Mr. Rebel? Who was the second on that?
I think Mr. Rebel.
Okay. Okay, we'd have a roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Stan.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Wait a minute. If Mr. Rubel is not eligible to vote, he can't second the motion.
That was, that was Parisi, I believe.
Yeah, that was someone else. It wasn't me.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Jen.
It was either Mark Parisi or myself.
So we need to clarify who it was.
Yeah, it was me. I second, but I heard another person say second. I just wasn't sure who it was.
I was the other voice.
So, Eileen, you could just attribute it to Mr. Stanton, and then since both he and Mr. Parisi did it simultaneously.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, next resolution, case number BA eighteen dash thirteen, Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, resolution granting a one-year extension of time. Eligible voters is Cantor, Hughes, Merton, Stanton, Parisi, Rubel, and Sayah. Do I have a motion?
As Mr. Chair for BA eighteen dash thirty-three, I make a motion to approve.
Have a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Cantor. Have a roll call, please.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Stan.
Yes.
Mr. Rubel.
Yes.
And Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, the last resolution, case number BA twenty-two dash thirteen, Giuseppe Torcano, resolution granting bulk variance for accessory improvements. Eligible voters Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Stanton, Parisi, and Sayah. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Stan.
Yes.
And Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Okay, so I guess we're off to the second case on tonight, since the first one is going to be carried. Uh, this is case number BA twenty dash ten, one oh-seven SP, three sixty-six Ramtown Greenville Road LLC for a preliminary and final site plan approval. Application of three sixty-six Ramtown Greenville Road LLC is applicant and owner seeking preliminary and final major site plan approved for an addition to the existing seventeen thousand eight hundred and forty-five square foot masonry warehouse office building. The proposed site improvements include the removal, relocation of the existing site access drive to no longer be located within regulated wetland buffers, installation and circulation drive aisles throughout the site, which will provide access to twenty proposed parking spaces, four truck loading spaces, and three above-ground stormwater management basins. The applicant was before the board in two thousand and twenty-one and was granted a use variance and bulk variance approval for the same. The approval was conditioned on the applicant filing an application for preliminary and final major site plan as well as several, several other conditions on premises known as Block Three, Lot Twenty-nine, three sixty-six Ramtown Greenville Road. This application was previously scheduled for September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, and after some testimony was placed on record, it was carried to November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two with no further notice. Mr. Pape, good to see you tonight.
Thank you.
Get started.
I'm sorry, Ken, just wait one second. Um, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Parisi, since you've recused yourself, I would suggest you, if we were in the building, you would step down from the dais since you'd be recused, so maybe you should, obviously, if anyone could listen, but I think that you shouldn't be on camera since you're accused.
Sure, and I was gonna, just, I just wanted to make this statement and, uh, and I'll defer to Mr. Bayer and Mr. Pape as to whether or not you're comfortable with me participating in this application. Prior to me being appointed to the zoning board two months ago, I had numerous discussions with residents near this particular application regarding the underlying use variance, and, and I did make a financial contribution towards a legal fund regarding that use variance. I feel as though I could be impartial in the site plan, however, I just, as a matter of full disclosure, I think it's appropriate for me to defer to both of you as to whether or not you would like me to participate or not.
Mr. Bayer, do you want to be the first?
Sure, it is to pretty, if you contributed to a fun challenge in the approval, I, I think that's a conflict.
Okay.
I would recommend, um, stepping aside, so there's no taint, you know, on whatever happens as a result of the hearing tonight.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I concur with that as well, so.
All right.
And then also, nothing to do with Mr. Parisi, for the record, there was, since there was a reference to a fund, to a lawsuit, there was a litigation challenging the underlying, the board may recall, um, challenging the underlying grant of a use variance. That lawsuit um, was dismissed with prejudice within the last two months, six weeks. So there is no more litigation pending against the board or the applicant in connection with this matter.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Eileen, if you could, could you just remove me as a panelist, and I'll just, um, watch as, as a member of the public? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pape, um, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr., I'm going to refer to you, Mr. Mertens, as Mr. Chairman this evening. Mr. Chairman and all board members and board professionals and public, good evening. Kenneth Pape, on behalf of the applicant three six six Ramtown Greenville LLC, as was read into the record by the chairman, this is a site plan application that followed a use variance application. In two thousand and twenty-one, we spent four months with the board, and at the conclusion, the board granted a use variance application with conditions and responsibilities. Amongst those responsibilities was to return to the zoning board for a site plan review. And on September twelfth, we did return to the board and presented the testimony of two witnesses, Charles Sermont, the engineer who designed the plans testified extensively, as did John Ray, the traffic expert. At the conclusion of their testimony, there was examination by the board and examination by the board professionals, and they were opened up to the public cross-examination. At the conclusion of the cross-examination by the public, the record will reflect on page one twenty-eight of the September hearing, the, the public portion was closed as to those witnesses. We concluded at a late hour, you recall, we went till, well, close to eleven o'clock that night, and we agreed that we would return. The chosen date was September nineteenth, but unfortunately, that date did not work, so it went to November fourteenth. And for the record, we re-noticed and we republished for tonight's hearing as a continued hearing. The testimony this evening is Steve Rodasty, the architect who was responsible for the building design. The other two witnesses' testimony is complete. Before we go into the testimony of Mr. Rodasty, if I could just ask, I, I see that there are six members here, um, and I was looking at those who were here at the September meeting, and Mr. Stanton was not. Could we confirm that he's qualified so that he is a qualified member to vote this evening?
I did not watch the video. I apologize. If I was supposed to, I must have missed that.
No apologies to you at all. I'm grateful for all that you give. But I do think that with that, Mr. Stanton is, is not a qualified member.
If there's a vote tonight, that would be true.
Okay, very fine.
All right, can I, Mr. Pape, just real quick, just correct one thing. You said we had six. Uh, we have five. I just wanted.
Thank you, Mr. Parisi.
We have five, but Mr. Stanton can listen to testimony tonight.
So we have, so.
Right, but we need five yes votes.
Yeah, but yeah.
Five guesses, which I.
We don't need five. We, this is a site plan. We don't need five yeses.
I'm sorry, yes, right.
I want that the record to reflect, that's the very first time that I was right.
That down because it'll never happen again.
Is about one hundred to one. I just, at least.
I give it to you, yes.
Thank you.
But I will say, and I know you want Mr. Rodasty to testify, I just want to put on the record, we discussed the architecture and, Ken, you can jump in anytime you want me to stop.
Okay.
We discussed the architecture at length during the uh, use variance application. They provided additional information to our office. We acknowledged and accepted it as appropriate. Um, there's literally de minimis changes as a minor reduction, but I, I just want you guys to know that my office has reviewed it and is fine a hundred percent with the architecture as it was during the use variance application. So, Ken, you can testify you want, but I'm just here to tell you that, like, my office takes no exception to the architecture because we worked it out in, during the use variance application.
I appreciate that you're saying that.
And Mr. Pape and Mr. Chair, just to chime in and add to that, the, the change to the plans, and Mr. Pape can correct me if I'm wrong, the only change was the, um, width of the rear, uh, addition was reduced by one foot. Um, that was one of the requests that was made by the board at the last hearing. The, I believe it's sixteen parking spaces for that rear addition. Uh, didn't fully comply with the township's ordinance as far as the parking dimension, the length of the stall, they had eighteen-foot proposed, they needed an additional one foot to comply. So they've shrunk the width of that rear addition by a foot to now be able to make those parking spaces comply. And can the applicant will submit revised site plans as part of any potential resolution compliance to, to comply with that, correct?
Charlie, that is correct. I appreciate both of you.
Kind of what we're talking about with the reduction of the building and the architecture, but the overall visual appeal remains consistent with what we saw during the use variance. Unless, unless that's totally not true.
It's totally true, but I appreciate.
That's what I'm saying. So we're more than happy and awesome. Always happy to see Steve testify. I don't necessarily know that it's necessary. We've.
Okay.
Let's, let's, uh, how do the members feel? Because the only thing is, Jen, um, Mr. Rebel was not here to see the drawings.
Okay, that's fair enough, fair enough. Maybe some, I just want you guys to know that what we discussed during the use variance, which ninety percent of you guys have been here, so no, no disrespect, um, is consistent with the, let's just say, beat down we gave them already on the architecture. So, you know, I'm more than happy to have them represent it, but I just want you guys to know that we're okay with what they're presenting. That's all.
So, Ken, she's saying cut to the chase on the testimony.
I got it. I, I got, I'm, I had two elements to present to the board this evening. I spent the, this afternoon going through the transcript of the, of the, um, September meeting, and I reread the transcript of the zoning board hearings, and I reread the zoning board, the zoning board, the resolution, the use variance resolution. And the purpose of doing that was to put together a list of the commitments that this applicant has made to the Township of Howell and to the zoning board. And I think that what I, with permission, I'll, I'll go through that list with the board, and then I'll ask briefly for Mr. Rodasty to come on. Mr. Rodasty's responsibilities this evening, I'll share with you, were one, to identify that he took the one foot off the building as we promised we would for parking purposes. Two, to identify the lighting that he's going to take off his building so that we light from the ground. There was a request that we replace two of the building lights with two pole lights so that we'd be, our lights would be pointed at the building instead of away. He also would, is going to confirm that he removed all signs from the building, and we also asked him to design a new sign. You may recall, we have a wooden sign in our front yard, and we said the size of that sign, the location of the sign, the height of the sign, all dimensions would not change. But we asked Steve to take the architecture of the building out to the sign, so the sign matched the building. And that was the testimony that Mr. Rodasty, I intended to place on the record. I can do it in four minutes with four fast questions. But with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to go through those items that we recalled making promises to the township and to this board as we went through the hearings.
Okay, well, um, do you want us to get, get him sworn in first, and then we can go?
Sure, sure. We'll bring Mr. Rodasty in. We'll swear him in. Yeah, I know. We'll, we'll do him first so that.
Then everything's done there.
You got it.
Okay, Mr. Bayer.
Yes.
Is he in?
Is he in? I don't see him.
Have to bring him in, Eileen.
He's coming in the meeting now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Rodasty, you're muted.
There he is. Please. Evening.
Mr. Rodasty, can you raise your right hand? The testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
State your name for the record and spell your line.
So my name is Stephen Rodasty, R-A-D-O-S-T-I. And I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Mr. Chair and Mr. and Counselor, at the zoning board hearings on the use variance, Mr. Rodasty was sworn and his credentials were shared with the board. He was established as an expert in his field as an architect. May we continue in that vein this evening?
Yes, you may, because I, he did put his records on the credentials, so we do accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodasty, for the benefit of all, and especially Mr. Rebel, could you put up the, your building so that the building is, is up as we go through these quick questions?
Uh, yes, of course. I'll share my screen.
Then we're going to be efficient.
So I, uh, the screen that I'm sharing shows, uh, sheet CS one dated uh, February second, two thousand and twenty-two, with revision of ten twenty-five twenty-two. Um, this is a colorized version of the proposed warehouse, uh, floor plan and elevation.
And Mr. Rodasty, you were charged with removing one foot of the building's depth, um, a distance of approximately two hundred and fifty plus or minus feet so that parking stalls could be accommodated a full nineteen feet. Have you done so?
Uh, yes, I have. I, uh, it's, it's a hundred, I reduced the building from one hundred and eight feet in depth to a hundred and seven feet in depth. That's one, one foot. And the length of that portion of the building is a hundred and eighty-six feet. I'm reducing it by a hundred and eighty-six square feet.
Thank you. And during the hearing on September, there was a request, request made by the boards professionals that we modify lighting, that we use pole-mounted lighting pointed towards the building rather than lighting mounted on the building and pointing away. Would you, for the record, confirm that you and Mr. Sermont will work together to accomplish that change in lighting?
Uh, yes, that is correct. We'll remove those lights and we'll work together.
And would you confirm that the building no longer has any signage mounted on the building?
Uh, that is correct. We removed the building-mounted sign, uh, from the previous, um, drawing.
And if you, you heard my introduction with regard to the sign, that the sign's location, size, height is identical, but you've used the architectural treatments of the building on a replacement sign in kind. Could you first confirm that and then do a brief description of the sign that you just, you created?
Uh, yes, so the, so the, the new sign is actually just a hair smaller than the other, uh, than the previous sign. Uh, the previous sign was a rectangular, uh, rectangular wooden, uh, monument sign. Um, the new sign, um, matches the same materials as the existing building. It would be made of, uh, I'm going to zoom into this a little bit here. Ken. So, um, the new sign is just a couple, uh, square feet smaller than the previous sign. So this one is thirty-one square feet. Um, it is eight foot in width and five feet in height. Um, it is, uh, made of, um, colored concrete to match, uh, the building and look of the bill, the look of the building. In the upper, uh, portion of the sign, we have street-adjusted numerals. We took those numerals off the building and we add them to the sign. They will be, uh, seven and a half inches high, uh, non-internally illuminated, uh, channel letters. And then the center, central portion of the sign, we'd have internally illuminated, uh, letters, uh, for the signage itself.
My last question of you, sir, is Ms. Name has stated that the building design has not changed from that which was presented at the time of use variance. Would you confirm that?
Um, that is correct. Other than the changes that we just discussed now, um, there's been no change to the building.
Mr. Chair and board members, I have nothing further, Mr. Rodasty. And those, I wanted those points to be on the record because they represent commitments that were made to the board. He is available for examination to the board members and to the professionals, if that is your pleasure.
Okay, thank you. Um, real quick, is that, that's going to be lit up during the night? Does have a small light on that? As far as night lighting, even though the business will not be operating at night or will be off, no lighting?
We, we don't have any need for overnight lighting. It's not, it's, it's not a retail location. It's most important part of that are the numerals for fire and emergency service.
Okay, so there'll be no lighting on the sign, okay?
No overnight lighting on the sign.
Okay. Any board members have a question on this, uh, professional?
I'm good, sir.
Um, Mr. Chairman.
No other questions? No other questions?
Mr. Chair, just uh for Mr. Pape, Mr. Radasti, um, I just asked that um a dimension be added to the plan. Can, you know, when you resubmit the site plan, just confirming that it complies with the setback requirement for the sign in the zone. And then I'll leave this up to the board's discretion, but when we have seen signs come in on on site plans, you know, uh I think our ordinance requirement does require some like ground plantings around the base of the sign. Can the applicant have any issue with providing?
No, no, and I my my very next ti- topic is to address all of Ms. Spiro's requirements, and I was going to put it in right there, but yes, the base will be landscaped.
That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Pape, what I think we'll do then is we'll get um get allow you to go ahead and uh continue with those a couple of things that you're going to address tonight, and then we'll open it up to public for this uh witness as soon as you're done.
Thank you. You know, as we presented this application to to the board, we also, as you know, spend time with your professionals, with your commissions, and with your your fire chief. In this instance, last May, I met in the field with Ms. Shari Spiro, and we went over her review letter. Um, we agreed to all of the requests that were made by Ms. Spiro in her written report from, I think it was last May. With the exception of two, there was one, there was a request that we remove the driveway. And Dr. Walker has confirmed the driveway has been moved as far as it can be, and it cannot be moved any further. And also, we would respectfully request the opportunity to take landscaping that was dedicated to to be in the parking lot and plant it elsewhere on site. We prefer to use the la- the landscaping um anywhere else on site for enhancement. We also would like all of the w- w- we had made a commitment that we would plant as much material as possible. That we would enhance all of the buffers. Filling in the buffers with we we have currently, we have an an excess number of plants that would otherwise have to be um become part of the cash fund. We our our goal is to work with Shari and maximize all the landscaping and on site. There was con- crest questions brought to our attention by board members and by the public about the the thickness of the buffers. We'd like to make certain that all those buffers are a hundred percent. Okay. We so that with 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 regard to all of the recommendations of Ms. Spiro, other than that driveway, we'd say yes. And we respectfully request a consideration of taking the landscaping out of the parking lot and using it elsewhere on site. We also were asked to come back to the board and confirm the weight limit on the bridge that's just above our site. And we went to the county and we s- we s- got a an email which we forwarded some time ago to this board. That bridge has no weight limit. The county has indicated is it has no weight limit. So we've confirmed that.
Ken, if I could just jump in on that too, and I just want to confirm for the board, um, I also reviewed the township's uh municipal ordinance as far as weight restrictions on municipal roadways. And it it does not appear that there's any weight restriction on Rantown Greenville Road, and I can confirm that I also spoke with representatives from the county engineering department that there is no weight restriction on that on that county bridge.
Thank you.
Okay.
We also met with the environmental commission a couple of times. The last time was this past spring. We addressed all of their concerns. They placed that on the the advised us of that at the, I think the it was the March or the April meeting. I met with the fire chief, I don't know how many times. Uh, the fire chief had a lot to say on this one. This we we made certain that all his requirements were met. The only thing that hasn't been done is the striping of the parking lot in accordance with his striking striping plan, which we will do. But the the foot right now, the building that's there does not have a fire suppression system. The entire building will be fully suppressed. You'll recall that our clients brought a water line to this site. They they did that in advance of any request of this board so that there was a firefighting water supply for them. We also uh went made a commitment to go to the DEP and secure all of the necessary permits. You'll recall the lengthy testimony of Dr. Walker during the use variance application where he pointed out a number of environmental encroachments and a number of activities that were taking place on the property that were really inappropriate. There was there was gravel parking fields that were in that the wetlands. There there was grading that was took place um in the riparian buffers. We went to the DEP, we secure, lawyers say we, Dr. Walker and Joseph Portnoy secured every one of the DEP permits. We provided copies of those to your secretary in September. They're all in place. They had, some of them have not been perfected. The perfection requires recording of them a as means against the property, which we will do, but it requires a that there's a site plan approval in place. So upon this board's favorable consideration of the site plan, the DEP permits in place will be perfected. We have freehold soil conservation approval. We have conditional county approval. The county approval condition is there's there's uh a payment and a deed that they've asked for. We have our water and sewer approvals. We were asked to make sure that every one of our lighting fixtures was shielded and pointing downward and and I think the proper terminology, Charlie, help me, three thousand Kelvins is the temperature or color, which it which is.
It's it's color temperature.
Color te- okay, so what we that was the request and we agreed that it would be three thousand Kelvins for the the LED lights. We also agreed that we would install curving and sidewalk. We didn't even wait for Ms. Beam to tell us that she we had to go first. We said, we'll go first and we'll put it, we'll put the sidewalks in, and there's road widening as we had worked out. There was a request that Dayton Basins two and three have guide rails for safety purposes. That was a discussion in September. And those guide rails will be installed as requested. We talked about the buffer and how the buffer had to be fifty feet everywhere. Some places it was a residential buffer, and sometimes it was a farm buffer. And sometimes it was both. We do have a fifty-foot buffer everywhere except for a sliver of the existing building that encroaches. But it should be noted that there was a bump out on the building that our client is removing so that that encroachment is removed, but everywhere else, we have a full fifty-foot buffer. We were directed to add two parking spaces and on the record, we agreed that we would. There was a long list that was part of the record at the time of the use variance. And I read that list into the record when we were uh there was a member of the public who asked us wh- what restriction we had agreed to. I didn't plan on reading that again. Um, but every restriction that we agreed to at the time of the use variance carries forward um to to this application. I think that summarizes, uh we also agree that this is a one, an owner operator building. This is not a building with tenants, that the new building would not have a mezzanine that mezzanine or an office. Um, and that the the um we also placed hours of restriction on truck movements. Tractor trailer movements could only take place between nine and twelve, Monday to Friday. And then we had a a list of hour restrictions, all of which were memorialized in the use variance application that carry forward. I just want to make certain that all that was before you, and if there's any notes from Charlie or Sherry or Jennifer or An- Andy that um go beyond that, um, please help us out. We want to make sure we honor all the commitments that were made. And and other than the opportunity to sum briefly, Chairman, that is your applicant's direct presentation for the site plan relief.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pape. Um, Jennifer, Charlie, do you need any uh have any comments this time?
I did not. I'm good.
Mr. Martins, I do, and I'll just summarize a couple of things. And Ken, if I if you feel I'm stating anything incorrectly, you can jump in. Um, so uh obviously, we discussed the stormwater management, how it was predominantly designed as part of the DEP permit process and as part of the use variance approval. Uh, but there were some minor comments in my letter. Mr. Portnoy indicated, you know, the applicant would address those as a condition of any approval. Um, we talked about the applicant agreeing to put sidewalk across the frontage. Um, any deeds of easements for site triangles for the driveway, for any sanitary sewer laterals uh for the township access as needed. Um, also, uh, we asked that the applicant provide right-of-way dedication or roadway widening easement in accordance with the township's master plan. Um, as part of the use variance approval, the applicant did agree to a turning restriction for trucks exiting the site of no left turns. There was a signed detail on the plan. I just asked that the the site plan be further clarified, specifically indicating it on the site plan, just so it's clear um for record purposes. Uh, we also talked about all the turnaround areas at the rear of the site that they would be striped for no parking fire lanes, so that way they're not used for parking. Mr. Merton said questions regarding the space next to the trash refuse enclosure not being utilized for parking or storing of any equipment, materials, or trash and debris. Everything will be inside the enclosure. Um, Mr. Samonte indicated that they could accommodate the site plan to provide uh or convert one of the parking spaces for the rear addition to be handicap accessible. Um, so I just want to make sure that gets done. Ken, you talked about all the lighting uh changes which are acceptable. Um, uh, obviously, you talked about the DEP approvals, how the fencing and the conservation easement can't be perfected until the site plan is. So I just want to make it clear for the board, that was something they agreed to as part of the use, and i- it can't get actually done until the site plan gets approved. And then one last comment, and Ken um indicated the applicant agreed to provide guide rail around both of the rear basins, which is good. I do want to point out that one of the members of the public was concerned about the proximity to residential and kids um and had asked if if the applicant would consider also putting a fence around those two basins. Ken, Ken, is that something the applicant would be amenable to?
Of course. Wha- what type of a fence would you think is appropriate?
Uh, you know, post and rail, you know, just uh something four foot high to make sure that it has gates and it can be locked, so it's aesthetically pleasing. Um, you know, post and rail with some maybe kind of like mesh or chicken wire kind of, you know, to it, so it kind of maintains a rural characteristic, but also is making sure that uh, you know, young kids are not going to be able to uh, you know, climb through it into a basin, I think would be appropriate.
Like it a lot.
As you know, Ken, the anti-climb and the hostile vegetation is probably something, a combination of both, that will work.
That's fine. Uh, that's an acceptable condition. All the conditions that you read, Mr. Kuntlove, are conditions that are acceptable without any exception.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Uh, John, do you have anything?
I do. Um, with regards to the uh uh the use, uh, the resolution, um, I'm sorry, the resolution to the use variance, uh, on page nineteen. Uh, there is a some testimony and stipulation with regards to the parking of loaded vehicles overnight. Uh, although I have not been able to confirm uh the complaints that have come into the office, uh, I just want the applicant to be aware that we are getting noise complaints from refrigerator trucks uh running uh overnight. Uh, if those trucks are empty, there should be no reason why uh the refrigerator, the refrigerant is running on those trucks, so there should be no idling and no refrigerator trucks uh running uh after closing hours. So I just want to make the applicant aware. Uh, like I said, I haven't been able to substantiate uh the running of the trucks, but uh I figured this would be the perfect opportunity just to remind what uh the applicant had stated in his use variance uh that he would not be doing that.
With the, thank you for putting it on the record. There are activities that take place on the site currently that we have agreed would be stopped. Um, there was during the September meeting, we talked about some of the difficulties that the site currently has that'll all be uh removed when the 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 plan is implemented, but or everything that you put on the record is consistent with what we agreed to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, John, thank you. Uh, Sherry, do you need any uh have anything to add to the landscaping end of it?
You're on mute.
You're muted.
Still muted.
Sorry, this this space bar didn't work. I was just saying, um, Mr. Pape and I, you know, as you mentioned, went over the comments I had, and he agreed to everything, so I don't have anything further.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Pape, uh, one of the biggest, I think I heard more questions about this at uh the last meeting with the public. There was an issue with the trucks backing in and out. With the new driveway where it's located, this will not happen anymore. I believe everything will be coming in without having any backing in or backing out onto Ramtown Greenville Road. Is that true?
Mister Chairman, when that came up, Mr. Ray was asked to address it, and the statements that he made on the record were very clear. He said, we've designed it so that the tractor trailer will enter the site tra- tr- tractor first. It will have a turnaround facility on site so that it will exit the property tractor first. There will be no backing in or out um we're we're using the roadway. So that's on the record and that's part of the design. Statement that you made is is correct.
Yeah, okay, that's I just want to clarify that. And the other thing was, um, we are sticking with the resolution with one tractor trailer delivery between twelve AM and twelve PM, so that's.
Not nine and.
Nine AM and twelve.
Trac- tractor trailer movement is between nine AM and twelve to make certain that we're not in conflict with school movements.
Okay, well, here's where I'm getting a little, um I'm not sure if we're totally in agreement. Originally, I heard the word one tractor trailer between nine and twelve. Now, it's anticipate. Um, do you think there may be more than one coming in?
Mister Chairman, can uh there could be more than one coming in. Currently, there is one tractor trailer that comes in, and then there is the um box trucks that exit. We we respectfully ask that we be prepared to have more than one, but never outside of nine AM to twelve noon and always as we just described.
Okay, I just want that on the record so everybody knows that one is not part of the resolution, so. Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Okay, any board members have any questions? Oh, no. Okay, Mr. Pape, I believe we're going to have to go the public with the um whoever, um I'm sorry, Mr. Madowski is going to be answering questions. Are we the public only able to ask them questions? Are they allowed to make any more comments?
There's no limit to comments, but the examination of witnesses, as we stated on the record, was limited to Mr. Radasti.
Yes. Mr. Bayer?
That's accurate, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Uh, for for clarification, does that mean that the questions have to be addressing the architectural designs posed by Mr. Radowski and not repeating what has already been asked?
Yeah, that's what we said on the record. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then at this time, I would like to open this meeting up to public based on the testimony and Mr. Radasti, and any questions should be uh obtained mostly everything to him.
I'll make a motion to open the public, Mr. Chair.
Do I have a second?
All right, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Eileen, you can um throw the public.
For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on the application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you're brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Okay, then let us know if we have anybody. Give everybody a couple of minutes.
There's nobody currently raising their hand.
Okay, one more time, members of the public who would like to make a have a question tonight, may call in at this time, otherwise we will be closing to public.
There's nobody from the public raising their hand.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public?
Motion to close.
Have a second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Pape, I guess we're concluded with public, so if you want to make a final statement. Okay, Mr. Pape, I guess we're concluded with public. So if you want to make a final statement and.
A very brief, Mr. Chair, very brief. I think that going through the commitments that the applicant made. And accepting the commitments that Mr. Conliff and Ms. Spiro reminded us of. Pretty much told the whole story. This applicant has worked with this board and the professionals. Every step of the way, we respectfully ask that the board consider favorably. The preliminary and final site plan as presented with all the commitments that the applicant has made. And bringing all the use variance language forward.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. Professionals, anybody else would like to add any final?
No, not for me.
Okay, Mr. Bayer, just for the sake of some of the board members. If the application was denied, the applicant would still be able to use this property in its existing. Ways right now. Am I correct to assume that?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
I just want to make one thing abundantly clear. The use variance for the expansion of this use was already approved.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, Jen.
Okay, so it's not just going back to what was. They have the right to use this. In the, you know, in the accepted, like the additional area. It's just a matter of how we do it on the ground. Through the site plan, but like, I want to be very clear, the use is there.
Yes.
They asked for us to give them an approval to expand it. That already happened. So now it's a matter of how exactly it's going to be on the ground. But the use and the expansion was approved already.
Yes, I, I concur.
I just want to make that clear.
Okay.
But they could still, Jen, avail themselves to continue to operate the property in their current manner, which they. That's, so that was the question, Mr. Merton.
Yes.
Agree.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I would like to know the pleasure of the board.
Matt, I'll, I'll speak if you don't want to speak. I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve. The preliminary and final major site plan for case number BA twenty dash one oh seven SP.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Eileen, can we get a roll call, please?
Sure, Mr. Cantor.
Bear with me for a second. I originally voted no to the use variance for this. But as Ms. Beam states, this is a preliminary and major site plan procedure right now. The applicant has worked diligently with our professionals to ensure. At all of the considerations that the board and the public had with this property were taken into account. If we don't pass this, they're going to continue to operate this site in an unsafe manner without the environmental remediation. And without the corrected lighting and any of the other restrictions, the timing, the nine o'clock to twelve. Therefore, it behooves us to approve this and enable them to. Operate this as a proper business and to the benefit as best as possible to Hal Township. Therefore, I vote yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes, I'd just like to quickly add too, that I do appreciate all the, there's been a lot of back and forth about, you know, make, changing things and making things better. And we do appreciate the applicant working with this board to get all these issues taken care of and being very thorough. So we appreciate that. And with that, my vote is yes.
Mr. Mertens?
I'm going to almost ditto exactly what Mr. Cantor said. I voted no originally. But again, Jennifer is absolutely right and I know this is a use. Variance has already been approved. What we want to do for the residents to live around here now is to make sure that this site. Is best suited for them as we can possibly do. And I think the applicant has made many. Conditional concessions to make sure. That our wishes and the wishes of the residents who spoke up at the last meeting are being taken care of. And my vote is yes as well.
And Mr. Rubel?
I boo yes as well.
Application is approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Stanton vote?
No, he's.
I don't believe I can.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's not qualified. I want to thank every one of you and promise that your applicant is looking forward to implementing the plan that we just created together. So thank you all and good night.
Thank you, Mr.
You're welcome.
Bye bye.
Okay, at this time, I do not believe we have any other business to take care of except our next meeting date. Eileen, is that the twenty eighth of November?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we also have a rules committee meeting. I believe, is that still set? I believe December fifth.
Yes, I believe so. It's December fifth.
Okay, now Jennifer, you weren't here the last meeting. Is that going to work for you?
I'll make it work.
Okay, you'll make it work.
Is that in the evening? What time is that scheduled?
It's at six o'clock.
Yeah.
Are, are now, are we in person or is this, I'm looking now?
No, it's in person.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually have it at the Ivy League.
At the Ivy League, yeah.
But I thought Paul couldn't come?
I don't believe he can make the next meeting, first meeting in December for the actual zoning board meeting.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
Said for the rules committee that he would video in or be on speakerphone because I don't think he can make that either.
Okay, okay, that's fine. So I, I mean, that's really, I think the best thing to do is just do it that way. So we can bring, we can bring them to the Ivy League. So we'll be there.
Okay, and Rich, good job, buddy.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Leadership tonight. Thank you for your leadership tonight.
Okay, thanks and thanks for being the secretary tonight, man. I hope we didn't work you too hard.
No, no, no. I just had some work stuff and I was able to work it out. So.
Yeah, thanks for flipping your schedule, your flight. Even though you came in on false pretenses with a different name. All the best to your dad.
Yes.
And everybody have a happy Thanksgiving and we'll see you on the twenty eighth.
Bye.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Have a good night.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah. I almost made it through the meeting. On favor?
Hi.
Good night.
Good night.